So before we do that, Chair, let's just do a roll call vote for who's in attendance at the meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. Chair Brassfield.
Present.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
First off, I'll mute and then I'll say here.
Good afternoon, Mike. Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa. I don't think he's joined us yet, so he's absent. Commissioner Millich.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Okay, if we could, start the agenda with the consent items of the approval of minutes. Any comments on the minutes?
I'll move to approve them as presented.
This is Hons and Reed, second.
We have a first and a second with Dawson and Reed. Any other comments? Then I'll ask for a vote. Can we have a vote, please?
Yes, I'll do the roll call vote. Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa, absent. Commissioner Millich.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And do we have any public comment?
So let me go ahead and...
I think we need to note that today's date is July the 14th. I think there was a miscue there on May.
That was the minutes for the May 26th.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let me just go ahead and read into the public record. The dial-in number that should be at the bottom of your screen is 831-225-0330. Please call in for general public comment. I see none. You can maybe wait a few minutes or a few moments and then move on with the meeting. And if additional public comment comes into the phone call, I will stop the meeting and share that with you.
Sounds good.
I see Terry.
Great. So Commissioner Latassa joined the meeting at 4:03. Thank you very much.
Okay, first item. And who's going to be presenting this, Kim?
It's me, so just give me a moment as I'm toggling between four screens. I'm getting better at this. I feel like a... I don't know, I'm just getting used to it. So we'll just see here. I'm almost there. Okay, can all the commissioners see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much, Planning Commission. This afternoon, I have the pleasure of presenting...
This is Hons and I can.
Okay, you can see it. Thank you. The project site is located at 6 Lower Reggsdale in the Ryan Ranch Ranch Business Park. It's commonly referred to as the Montage Ohana Project. And the Planning Commission will be considering three major actions this afternoon. First is adoption of the CEQA addendum. Second, approval or recommendation for approval of a use permit to allow extended care for adolescent behavioral health and development on 25% slope, and a variance for building height. The third action is a recommendation to amend the municipal code to allow medical offices with extended care in the Industrial Administration and Research District, subject to review and regulation. And I need to emphasize, this is a recommendation to the city council because of the zoning changes that are needed in order to allow the project. So this is a bird's eye view of the project site. The project site is accessed from Lower Reggsdale Drive in the Ryan Ranch Business Park, but it extends down to Highway 68. And you can see the project site denoted in yellow on your screen. And the Ohana Project is fairly unique in that it is creating a design that really fits the project site and addresses the site's topography issues, but also addresses the greater goal of the project, which is to provide mental health services to adolescents. I think that as you look at this project and see this project, you'll see that it's very unique. So the Ohana Project is basically a medical office building with extended care. And by extended care, we mean there will be 16 residential beds in the overall facility that will provide 24-hour service to certain patients. It's a family-centered adolescent behavioral health care center, so it's not just the patient, but addressing the entire family and how that fits in with mental health services. It includes, obviously, offices, conference rooms, outpatient therapy rooms, a kitchen dining hall, a gymnasium, and as I mentioned earlier, a 16-bed residential unit. And this is the site plan of the project site. I've highlighted for you, there are two driveways off of Lower Reggsdale. One of those are shared with the adjacent property. And you can see there's the serpentine structure really addresses some of the topography issues that I will show you on the next page. As you can see, for those of you that are accustomed to looking at models, it's fairly flat at the top of the project site in that the building has this very unique design to step down the project site and to avoid the very steep slopes that are at the back of the property. And we'll be talking about that a little bit more this afternoon. It is a 55,000-square-foot structure. The lowest level is the residential program or those 16-bed units. The mid-level includes group therapy spaces, kitchen, cafeteria, gym, and mechanical. And the upper level is the public entry, public function, and outpatient clinics. And this is the lowest level. What you're looking at here, this is Lower Reggsdale at the top, and this is at the very bottom of the site. You can see the rest of the serpentine building, but the residential units are located here, and they'll have majestic views of the hillsides across Highway 68. The mid-level, as you can see here in the mid-level, it's sort of in the middle of the building. The gym and azem area is here, and we have some additional mid-level uses right through this area. The main portion of the building is on the upper level, includes a variety of offices and therapeutic offices to provide services. The use permit is for extended care in 25% slope, and the variance is for some areas of the project that exceed 35 feet in height. And when looking at a use permit, we're really looking at whether or not the use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning chapter and the purposes of the district. And as I mentioned, but I just want to emphasize, the medical office use is principally permitted. It's really the 16 residential beds that require the use permit as well as the 25% slope. And in staff's opinion, the proposed extended care really fits well with the professional and office buildings, and could also be compatible with the type of manufacturing that we see in Ryan Ranch, which is very within buildings and really has no impact outside the structure. This project will add additional jobs to strengthen our economic base in our city, and that's a key objective of the IR District. And very important that the majority of the extended care uses are at the farthest point from Lower Reggsdale. It's really down, if you will, almost on a third tier from Lower Reggsdale itself. Projects are required to be consistent with the general plan and basically not be detrimental to the project site, the surrounding area, or the general welfare of the city. This is a medical office building with extended care. The use will be 100% located within a building. There will be no off-site impacts. And staff has found it consistent with the general plan that are, and this is a quote for our general plan, "that in most cases in our IR District, industrial areas are taking the form of business parks with a combination of office and industrial uses." And that we are looking at increasing a residential component in many of our IR District areas. The third most is that any proposed use shall comply with any specific condition required for that use. I did share the conditions of approval with the applicant as part of the agenda publication, and I believe that the applicant is able to comply with all of the project's conditions of approval. I want to take a few moments and talk about slope. What we're looking at here is in the red are the portions of the development project that may touch that 25% slope. In fact, we can see large areas of the site at the bottom of the hill are 25% sloped or exceed that even more. But you can tell based on this red coloring that the building has really been carefully situated on the flatter portions of the lot and has been designed to try to keep as much off of it of the 25% slope as possible. The prohibition for development on slope is actually contained in our general plan, and it allows the Planning Commission to approve it, but it requires you to make three findings. First, to prohibit development on slopes over 25% on new lots that are created to provide new building sites, so if we're looking at a subdivision. In this case, this is an existing lot of record, and no new lots are proposed. And the second idea is this concept of minimal encroachment, that we're putting as little of the building or the improvement on the 25% slope as possible, and that we're trying to minimize impacts to adjoining property in the public, and really that the Planning Commission determines that the amount and the location of 25% slope severely restricts development on the lot. And as I've mentioned, the project has been moved to the upper portion of the lot to avoid steeply-sloped areas. The development encroachment is minimal. It's only 3% of the total site area, and is really needed to address the unique topography issues that we're encountering on the site. C is that if we know that there's an active landslide area that it's prohibited, there are no active landslides or slope instability issues that we know about on this site. So the variance is unique because I think the shape of the building is unique. And what you can see is in the dashed area or these darkened areas on your screen, very small portions of the building exceed 35 feet. So the balance of the building that you see here in white is under or at 35 feet. And these lines, A1, A2, A3, and A4, are section drawings that I'm going to walk you through that the architectural firm has prepared to show you the exact height variances that we're looking at with this building. So Section 1 that we saw in the site plan, we're looking at a roof ridge of actually 50 feet at that most extreme location and a roof elevation of 248. Right behind that, we're only looking at about 41 feet. So you can see that the building addresses that topography issue right in that area. The third section, the height of the building is only 37 feet 10 inches, so only a couple feet over the requirement of 35. And a little bit further back, it's at 37 feet 5 inches. So once again, right around 37 inches on that one side. Variance findings, the Planning Commission is very... There needs to be special circumstances. We've spoken a lot about the site's unique site topography. It is not a flat lot in our downtown or even in other areas of Ryan Ranch that, you know, doesn't have topography. We have some unique site conditions here. Staff does not believe the project's detrimental or interest to the property or improvements in the vicinity because the building has really taken steps to step down the site and address the topography. And we don't find it a grant of special privilege because this is a very unique site and really has those abrupt variations in topography. Other issues, there is a requirement in our code for the scenic highway to have a 100-foot setback from Highway 68 to any proposed development. And we're well looking over a 310-foot setback from the right-of-way of Highway 68. So it is almost three times the amount of setback that's needed. And a lot of that also has to deal with, obviously, the steepness of the slope. They can't build, nor do they probably really want to build, a normal rectilinear building on the site. I do want to point out that this project has gone to the Airport Land Use Commission, including the zoning modifications. And the Airport Land Use Commission has found it consistent with the comprehensive land use plan for the site with a couple conditions. One was the requirement of a navigation easement that already exists in Ryan Ranch. So that condition appears fulfilled by existing easements and conditions. And then, second of all, more regarding the zoning amendment, that if the city is looking at another facility that includes what they call vulnerable populations, which would be children or potentially seniors, that as part of that land use decision-making process, we bring it back to the ALUC for their consistency determination. And we've actually built that into the zoning code amendment that's attached to your staff report. So the land use regulation changes. As I mentioned, medical offices are principally permitted. And this idea, though, of allowing a few overnight stays was something that was not contemplated in our zoning code. And so what we've done is we've created a new definition for extended care. And extended care is a medical facility where persons requiring 24 hours of supervised care for a period of time not to exceed 90 days. This use does not include patients seeking emergency medical care or hospital acute care. So I do want to make that clarification. We're not talking about emergency services. We're talking about specific overnight care for a mental health situation that doesn't qualify for hospital acute care or emergency medical care. The zoning amendment includes special regulations to address airport safety zones. Specifically, we're not looking at allowing this in airport safety zones 1 through 5, which are really the approach zones. What we're saying is it's outside of those areas or in the balance of the city. There was also a question on how we were going to address parking for extended care. And like other unique uses, we're recommending that that's based on a parking and transportation study. And in fact, that's been included in your staff report today. The CEQA addendum is really looking at carrying over those conditions of approval for all developments in Ryan Ranch regarding architectural review of lighting and signage in that area to ensure that it fits in with the environment. We also try to comply with the biotic and tree resource assessment. There's standard conditions on timing of vegetation removal, best management practices, making sure that the trees that we're saving are protected. We're looking at mitigating the oak tree removal at a one-to-one and that be monitored as it occurs. There are 10 trees proposed for removal on this site and 10 replacements in its stead. The exact tree replacement plan and landscaping plan would really be under the purview of the Architecture Review Committee, but I thought it was important just to mention here because it was part of the CEQA addendum as well. Also, there's standard conditions to avoid impacts to nesting birds. We like to see construction happen between the start around October outside of the nesting season. And I know the project proponent is looking to try to start construction this fall or early winter. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt at resolutions recommending the city council adopt the CEQA addendum, approve the use permit to allow extended care, and the development on 25% slope, the variance for building height to exceed 35 feet up to a maximum of 50, as I've presented this afternoon, and to amend the municipal code to allow medical offices with extended care in the Industrial Administration and Research District, subject to review and regulation. I'm happy to answer questions. I know the project proponent is also on the phone and is available to answer any questions. And that concludes my presentation. So Chair Brassfield, I will turn that back over to you. So Chair Brassfield, I will turn that back over to you. So Chair Brassfield, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Yeah, somebody muted me, I'm sorry. Just curious to know if anybody has any questions for Kim.
I do. Kim, Dan Fletcher here. Can you briefly explain how height is calculated?
Yes, the way height is calculated is from existing or proposed grade, whichever is more restrictive, and from that point up to, so whatever the point is under that most extreme part of the building up to the roof ridge. So it is a, it is an extreme measurement. It is not an average measurement that we did for many years.
Okay, one last question. Since we saw this project last, where has this project been? Is it the airport board that's reviewed it?
Yes, so the Airport Land Use Commission held a public meeting on this in earlier in July, and, you know, went through the formal consistency determination that they're required to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have one. Mike Dawson, I was thinking major deja vu when I was reading this. I said, I've seen this before just recently, and sure enough, we had. The question is, how did the addendum come to be done? Was there, was there a complaint? Was there, was there, what happened?
So it's required, a SEQA document is required when the size of building and zoning change is being proposed. When you last saw this project, it was at a conceptual design level, meaning it was just to get a first flush reaction to looking at the concept of extended stays. If the planning commission had said at that point several months ago, you know, we have major concerns with extended stays, you know, all of these issues need to be addressed, that it gives us an opportunity to try to address some of those issues as we're developing the language. So what you saw about four or five months ago was the concept of the project, and then the formal, the formal processing requires a SEQA document.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question then. So this is the second time we've seen the project and in much more detail now with the airport approval, the traffic study, the biotic study, the zoning change, and this, if approved, is the document that will, the vote, the document that will go to city council.
Correct. The city council will actually consider all of these actions.
All right.
We're going to bundle it all together and have that on the city council's desk with your recommendation.
And they have not seen it yet?
No.
Okay.
At even a conceptual level, they haven't seen it.
Any other questions?
I have a few questions, Kim. This is Tara Latassa. So regarding amending the city code for extended care for 90 days max, where did the 90 days come from?
You know, it came up with consultation between myself and the development team. They are actually not going to be proposing for the most part. Most of their patients won't be there for 90 days. But we were trying to come up with what's, you know, what's a relatively, let's not, you know, not 365 days, what is a shorter period of time that patients may need to be with this type of facility? And so we were looking at about, we came up with 90 days.
Okay. And then regarding the same, amending the city code, in your presentation, you talked about how this extended care specifically does not include, like, emergency room type of activity.
Yeah.
Is that, does that appear anywhere in the amendment? Or is that, how does, how would somebody in five years from now who maybe would be interested in such an activity know that that's excluded?
So it's specifically excluded in the proposed definition for office medical extended. So it's, it's built in there. I also do want to let you know, the hospital early on had decision points to make about what type of facility they were going to build, and if it was a hospital facility, it would have needed to have been built to state standards and would have been under state of California review for a hospital where this is, and they really made some decisions programmatically on where and how they would be addressing mental health issues within their, the framework of Montage Health. And so the, the patients that still qualify as needing emergency or acute services will be at CHOMP on Highway 68. So, and they can provide more detail. That's about what I understand.
Okay. So, and I guess the, so does the, amending the city code, does it, is a use permit required for extended care?
Yes, so in the code, we require a use permit for extended care, and that's why part of your recommendation this afternoon is looking at the use permit findings for extended care at the site. So that is our proposal, that extended care would not be a principally permitted use. It would be a conditionally permitted use.
With a use permit. And so it's an interesting aspect of this when it comes to the city council, is that they're going to be approving the change to the, to the city code and approving that referenced use permit all in one fail swoop.
And how that usually occurs, this is something that's happened semi-frequently, is the use permit will not become effective until the zoning code becomes law, which is a second reading and also 30 days thereafter. So there, I know by the time I, I'll do some slight amendments as we get the city council on the effective date, and I'll work with our city attorney's office, but it'll be effective upon the extended care being a conditionally permitted use.
Yeah. Interesting, you want to start construction in the fall. But then my next question is about the Resolution 1. It was the second document from the top of our, of the supporting documents.
Yes.
And there were several conditions in there. There's ARC review, which, you know, of lighting and signage and landscaping, which makes total sense. And of course, this project would automatically go to ARC anyway. But, so my question is, ARC really, this is one of those things that sort of the mass and form and sighting of the building comes to them as a completed thing, and they are...
It does somewhat. I mean, the variance will be set, the intrusion on the 25% slope will be set. They have wide discretion on, you know, the, the building materials, the exterior, the modulation, et cetera.
Okay. So, and then finally, the condition two, there's an oak monitoring for five years required. Does anybody verify that, or is that just sort of a good faith thing that the applicant has to monitor themselves?
No, we're required to monitor. So the applicant will have to submit to us monitoring reports.
Oh, okay.
And we've been very fortunate over the years that Montage Health worked with Bellinger Foster and has provided, as, you know, as projects go forward, monitoring reports.
Right. And it looks like there, there are three or four different documents that the city council will be approving that include conditions.
Correct.
This, this one I just referred to has these conditions, and then there are a bunch of other conditions on, a lot of them are sort of replicate each other, but, so they'll all be binding, I mean, all these various, these four different documents. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, just let me explain why I do that, because that might be confusing, is the planning commission may not approve the extended, or the council may not approve the extended care, but they may approve the variance and everything else about the project. So it allows each of those decisions to be independent.
Any other questions of Kim?
Yes. Stephen Milich, I have one. Kim, let's say that a patient is in there for 90 days and then goes home, and then can that patient then come back for another 90 days? Or is there a limit on, let's say, in a one-year period, you can only spend a patient 90 days?
The code doesn't, the draft code amendment does not establish a maximum stay, like, on a yearly basis. It says 90 days. I guess theoretically, there could be a situation where somebody was discharged maybe for two or three months, maybe they had a relapse of whatever they were experiencing, and they might come back to the facility. That's something that I haven't really spoken to the applicant about. I know they've really talked about this being, you know, much less than 90 days. They were looking at 30 to 60 days being a more typical inpatient service.
I'm wondering whether that's something that we should address.
So that's an interesting...
Why don't we ask that question of the applicant?
Good, good thinking, Mike.
Kim, I have a question. In regards to the use, do we have any other facilities in the city that have extended care like this?
I think we do.
Well, we use?
You know, I'm trying to think, you know, a medical office building with, with youth. No, I think, I am not aware of this, another project. In fact, as we've worked with the applicants, they believe this will be a model for the entire country. As they were looking at developing an adolescent mental health facility, they scoured the country, for examples, and they hired their director to be part of the design and development of the building. So I'm not aware of any in the city of Monterey, and the hospital will be able to give a greater information on how this compares for medical services, maybe in the state or in the entire country.
Thank you. Any other questions of Kim before we move on? Thank you. Could we have a presentation by the applicant?
So Bill, Camille, are you still on the phone? I also see Montage Health is on our Turbo Bridge. How would you like to approach this?
So Kim, I know that Tim Nyland would like to speak to the issues that have been addressed. Is it possible for him to do that via his connection?
Yes, it is. Is he on the call-in number? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and unmute caller ending in the, it says, Montage Health. You are...
And first off, I want to start off by thanking everybody on the planning commission for reviewing this. The number of questions were asked, and I'll do my best to address those. One of the ones that was asked recently was about the 90 day, and then somebody being discharged and then readmitted again for another 90 days. That's not the plan or the scope of the program. As Kim had alluded to earlier, our hope is that a maximum 30 to 60 days, the child adolescent program will achieve the therapeutic results that they need to, and hopefully the child will get back to their normal environment. So wanted to just allude to that. Secondly, there was a question about whether or not there is a local program. We are unaware of that. We are aware of possibly two others in the state of California. And as Kim had said, we expect to not only have local, but also state and potentially national interest in our program, because we are designing something that's really not seen anywhere in the landscape of child and adolescent mental health throughout the nation. So wanted to follow up on that as well. So also, there was a question earlier about starting construction in the fall. Our intention is to just have a groundbreaking before the end of this year, and likely construction then will start after the appropriate approvals. But our desire is to work with the donor and have a groundbreaking before the end of 2020. Are there other questions that I can answer?
Any other questions for the applicant? I do have one question. When you, when you look at the types of youth that will be participating in your program...
I have one question. When you look at the types of...
Just one moment, please. I'm going to have to mute because they're close to their... Chair Brassfield, you should be able to make a comment now without interfering.
Okay. My question goes to the types of use that you anticipate addressing. When you have the, kind of this kind of issues, that includes addiction problems?
Mr. Nyland, did you hear Commissioner Brassfield's question?
At this time, we are not...
Mr. Nyland, did you hear Commissioner Brassfield's question?
I do.
His background.
Mr. Nyland, did you hear...
Kim, he needs to turn off his background.
I'm sorry about the feedback. So at this time, we are not anticipating seeing any children with addiction issues.
So that's a no?
That's a no.
Correct, that was a no.
Okay. When you look at, and I'll address the issue of days, I thank Stephen for bringing it up, but is 90 days too much? What do you think?
So, Mr. Nyland, Chair Brassfield's asking, what do you think about 90 days or the timing?
Yes, I can hear the volume.
Mr. Nyland, did you have any opinion on the timing?
Good question. It was about days, but we didn't hear the whole thing.
If 90 days is the total per visit, would something less be appropriate? Because this is a question I'm sure I've already heard on commission, I would imagine will come from council. Are we putting in too many days? If you look to fix it in 30 to 60, would 70 days be better than 90? I think one of the concerns is that you're going to get people cycling into your facility.
So I appreciate the concern, and obviously, our intention is for intensive treatment to take place over the course of 30 to 60 days. And our hope is that the child at that point can return to their natural environment with their family. Obviously, time will tell, but we're hiring the best of the best to stop this, and our hope is that the program will be efficacious again in returning children back to their families within 30 to 60 days.
Do you have any problem with, this is Stephen Milich, do you have any problem with the 90-day maximum in a 365-day period? So in other words, it would be a maximum of 90 days per year? You could split it up 30 days, have recycling, just as long as it didn't exceed 90 days or whatever figure within a...
Our hope is that we don't have kids...
Not whole.
...to then be readmitted within a week or two after that. Assuming that that could potentially happen. If it's the commission's pleasure to make that limitation, that's something that we obviously would live with. happen. Uh, if it's the commission's pleasure to make that limitation, that's something that, uh, we obviously would live with.
I didn't understand the answer.
So, I think the answer from Mr. Nyland was, um, that may happen, like, in for a month, go out, in for another month. If the commission feels strongly about the ninety days, they will live within that standard. But I also heard a little bit that, you know, they might like some flexibility as they're working with their patients. But they would work within whatever condition the commission set.
Well, the ninety days, if you have a thirty to sixty days, uh, initial commitment, the additional thirty days or sixty days would allow for recycling. But in order to keep from turning it into a long-term facility, I think there should be a limit on it.
So I guess my only comment or response to that, Commissioner Milich, is as written, there could be, um, you know, there could be recycling. If the commission felt there was a legitimate reason to limit it to ninety days within a calendar year, I think you need to have that deliberation and discussion.
I think we can put that into discussion now. We've got the input. Any other questions by the commission? Stephen? Do you have any more?
We need to move public comment before deliberation. Okay.
I, I asked for questions, so. Thank you.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Then let's open it up for public comment.
Terry, Terry's muted.
At the bottom or?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I, I was just gonna say, the audio on that particular segment sort of sounded like the moon landing. One small step forward, et cetera. Anyway, little bit of levity, sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, the dial-in phone number, it should be at the bottom of your screen, is eight-three-one-two-two-five-zero-three-three-zero. And at this point, we do not have any additional callers. If you want to go on to deliberation, I'll make sure to interrupt you if there, somebody comes on the line.
Thanks, Kim. Let's, uh, start our deliberations. Any comment from the commission?
Uh, I have one. Oops. Have I been muted? No. Okay, Mike Dawson here. Um, I have some family experience with, uh, with this, and, uh, um, I think, I think to limit it to ninety days is a mistake. Uh, because, uh, in my experience, it, it wasn't ninety days, it was, it was, uh, six months on and off. And then, uh, and then another six months on and off. And so, uh, uh, I think that, that we should leave this, this to the doctors, to the medical people, and, uh, and not make decisions that we're not, that we're not capable of making.
This is Hansen, this is Hansen, and I wholeheartedly agree with Mike, um, that, you know, we can't be doing this. The, the, let's, let the doctors make the, the decisions on that aspect of it. I think the ninety days, um, over a single stretch, I think that's worthwhile, but I doing a, trying to limit it to do something that we have no idea about, uh, the circumstances. We have no idea what the doctors need. We have no idea. Um, and, and they probably don't necessarily know, sounding like, that this is going to be a unique facility, that there's gonna be some, you know, let's give them the enough play, uh, room to play, you know, so that they have, you know, you know, ab- ability for them to, to tweak it how they need to tweak it, rather than saying, no, 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 hard stance on ninety days and every three hundred and sixty-five days. I, I, we shouldn't be doing that.
I agree completely. Our planning commission job is land use, business use, airport safety, all of the items that have been suggested, the biotic study, but not how to take care of a patient.
My concern, brought it up, was that we don't have it zoned for long-term hospital use. And, uh, I was raising a question, and it, it hasn't been answered. A question I hadn't thought of before, so, you know, difficult to, to, all of a sudden, decide what we should do at this point in time on an issue of first impression.
Terry, Dan, any comments?
Well, I guess I would have a question of, um, of, of Carol Dawson and, uh, Hansen Reed. I'm sorry, uh, of, uh, Mike. The, uh, so are you, are you thinking that we should just get rid of the ninety-day thing entirely and just say it's extended care and leave it at that?
No, no, I, I wanted to leave it at the ninety days, so that there is, so I wanna follow within what they're, what they want, but not to, not to set it at a low, this is what they're, this is what they're, what, they seem to be living with what the, the, the Kim has come up with. Um, and I think that that is, they, you know, they haven't asked for a hundred and twenty days, they haven't asked for a hundred and eighty days. So, uh, you know, at least that, if they're saying it's between thirty, normally, a typical would be between thirty and sixty, giving a little leeway is a, is a good thing, right? I mean, I, I, you know, we're not making it in, 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 in-house care for three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. It is a, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a needed facility, and, and uh, I, I, I don't wanna do something that hampers what they need to do to treat the children, or the, I guess they're the minors, so.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I, I, I totally agree. So, you know, the ninety days seems appropriate. Uh, it just, now that we're in discussions, I wanted to say how much I really like this project. It's such a beautiful design. It's so unusual, and, and it'll be, I think it'll be really something that's gonna be a, a bit of a gem here in, in Monterey, and we'll all be proud of it.
Dan, any comments?
Yeah, I think the ninety-day thing, I was gonna make a comment, but that horse has been beaten, so. I'm on that. I, I think this is an easy project to approve. You know, as, as we've noticed, uh, the demand for particular types of uses have changed and continue to change, and I think we need to be prepared to act on those things, as such as this applicant's come before us, and they've done a wonderful job designing it, and a wonderful job of mitigating, um, the issues. Uh, so I'm in complete support of this project as presented.
Um, so then I would, I would like to make a motion, um, to recommend zo- recommend zoning code amendments to the city council to allow medical offices with extended care in the industrial administration-
Can I make comments?
Go, oh, yes, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, I think one of my concerns is that this doesn't become a long-term care facility, where you have multiplicity of commitments to this kind of a care. We're looking at a new use. We're looking at a new area, and I, I think that we need to really think about. And I don't know if it's gonna be an actual lockdown facility, or what security level it's going to be. But I, I do see that we have a need for it. It's just my concerns are dealing with these kind of facilities around the state. They create additional calls for service because people just, either they leave or they, they have other issues that cause problems. But uh, I just think it'd need to be a very deliberate thought process of how long we're going to be. And I don't disagree with the ninety days, uh, at all. But one of my concerns is that the end of ninety days, they go home for a few days, and then they come right back. Because people don't, they want to have their people near them instead of somewhere else in the state. And I, I don't think that we've considered this to be a long-term facility. Uh, that's my input. Go ahead, Hansen.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Sorry. So, Kim, can you put those, the, the, um, what we need to decide, so I can help me with the, with the resolution? Is that possible? Or just, I can just read the, uh, the description, too?
Um, let me just put it up for you. It'll just give me one second to pull back my presentation on my four screens. Sorry, it'll be just one moment.
No worries.
I missed Mr. Lombardo. Where is he? Was he, was he on the line somewhere? We missed him?
Um, I don't know. Okay. So if you can see that, there's three actions.
Yep. Uh, so I move to adopt the SEQA addendum as presented. Uh, so you, Kim, do you wanna do these on three separate motions and votes?
It can be one motion, but it should start off as, um, recommending the city council.
Sorry.
I would prefer, Hans, in three motions.
Well, let's, let's go with Chair Brassfield. What do you want, Chair Brassfield?
I, I just go ahead and just do it this way.
Okay.
You're doing fine.
Okay, so, uh, I, uh, move that we recommend, that this planning commission recommend to the city council to adopt the SEQA addendum as presented by staff. Uh, two, to approve the use permit UP, uh, twenty-dash-one-six-nine to allow extended care for adolescent behavioral health and development on twenty-five percent slope and variance, variant VAR twenty-dash-one-six-eight for building height of thirty-five feet allowed and fifty feet proposed. And three, to amend the municipal code to allow medical offices with extended care in the industrial administration and research dis- a district sub, uh, subject to review and regulation.
I think my only question is, is any member object to any one of the three items that they'd like to see it severed?
I, uh, object to number three.
So, uh, maybe if we would, Hansen, let's do one and two.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm, as, okay, so I'm amend the, um,
Motion.
Yeah, the motion to, uh, just for one and two to begin with, that, the, the, adopt the SEQA addendum and approve, uh, use permits, uh, and the variants.
Okay, do, do we have a second?
I'll send you that.
We have a first and a second? All in favor? Or actually, any comments? All in favor? No, actually-
Kim, are you gonna do a-
It, it's roll call.
Hi, I can take over the roll call vote for Kim. Uh, Chair Brassfield?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fre- Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
All right, so it looks like those first two, uh, two motions passed with seven votes.
So, let's discuss the third one before we make a motion. Any comments, Steve?
Well, I already made the motion. Well, there was already a motion. We just severed the, we amended the, it's fine, we can-
Yeah, so we severed it.
We can discuss it.
Yeah, we can, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, uh, my concern is with the ninety days and the recycling, and I think that should be addressed. And I, I don't think, uh, I don't know what the subject review and regulation means. Yeah. Who reviews it? Who regulates? Who decides whether it's an extended care facility? Or not? I mean, it's just, to me, it's something that should have been, should have been addressed. And I'm just, it's too loosey-goosey, I think, right now. And that's my objection to it. It's not that I objected to the project. I think it's a great project. I just think we need to, when we're gonna amend the municipal code, we, we should have more information and think it out a little better. That's all.
Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Terry. So I, I think that the, um, you know, I'm gonna vote i- in favor of, of Hansen's motion to approve this item number three. But the, the language that we're seeing in this little blue rectangle on the screen refers to a very detailed, and specific a- a- amendment to the city code that's found in the, all the resolutions and language we reviewed. Uh, isn't that right, Kim?
It is, and I'm happy to actually bring up the exact text amendment. This was a summary of the action, and, um, I'm happy to bring up the exact language if you need additional clarification.
That would be great, Kim. I'm looking for it right now, and it's, I'm scrolling through, and there's, problem is, there's two hundred and fifty-seven pages to get through to trying to find that exact page.
Okay, so just hang with me for a second while I bring up the packet and-
I think it's on page one of four, where it says, whereas the proposed amendment to the city's code is offices medical dash extended care. And, uh, this is gonna be page one of the resolution recommending the SEQA addendum. See that? Says offices medical, number one, and offices medical extended care, number two.
Yeah, my packet just froze, so let me go ahead and
Page one.
Bring up the actual resolution.
Okay, there's the resolution. I have page twenty-three, twenty-three, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, no, it's, 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 it's actually not in the, the, the ninety, ninety, uh, days. Ninety days is not in the, is not in the resolution for, uh-
You will be silent until the conference begins.
Not in the resolution for, uh, amending, the ninety days is not, I, I can't find it in the resolution, men, amending the, uh, the municipal code.
So if everyone can just wait a second, I'll get there. And I'm sorry, I'm just, it just froze up, and it should be in the definitions. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Can you make it bigger?
A lot bigger.
Okay, I made it bigger on mine.
Okay. So what we're looking at here is the actual ordinance amendment that's being considered. We have a couple findings. So the first is the definition change to chapter thirty-eight, article three. And this is what I read in my presentation. We're gonna be creating a definition which medical facilities where persons requiring twenty-four hours supervised care for a period of time not to exceed ninety days. This use does not include patients seeking emergency medical care or acute hospital care. There's the definition that will appear in our zoning code. In a separate chapter under the IR district where there's the list of uses, here is where it says that a use permit is required. So I know Commissioner Milich's question, well, who will make that decision? That decision will have to be made by the planning commission as part of a use permit process. As far as the supplemental regulations, I talked about extended care shall be limited to areas outside of airport safety zones one through five. Through the use permit process, the city shall evaluate the compatibility of the proposed extended care with adjacent uses. If a development is proposed that would intensify the occupancy level of vulnerable occupants as defined by the Airport Land Use Commission, the proposed changes shall be submitted to the Airport Land Use Commission for subsequent project-specific consistency determination. And then this is the part, offices medical is as specified by use permit for the parking requirement. So that's, these are the exact changes. There's a definition change, the use permit specifying planning commission, and then a special thing here about the airport safety zones. So I'm sorry I didn't go into more detail. I think I summarized most of that.
So this whole topic may be also be-
I'm wondering, for future planning commissions, wouldn't it be better to clarify that the ninety days can be extended? Or, or can be recycled for an additional ninety days? As opposed to have somebody argue what we're doing right now down the road in, in ten, twelve years? What do you think?
Could, could that be a ninety-day period subject to review?
I, I would like that.
Any other comments?
It's pretty clear. It says not to exceed ninety days. It's pretty clear. It says not to exceed ninety days.
That's why I'm.
Ninety days, but it's not clear. It's ambiguous whether or not you could go home for a few days and then come back for another ninety days. And I think the commission wants that to be left up to the medical personnel. So I think something should be in there to clarify that, that it's ninety days at a time, consecutive ninety days perhaps.
We don't want this to become, the exception to become a rule. I think that, I haven't heard anything from the applicant in the other, that otherwise, but are we making this a long-term care facility?
Well, that's my concern.
Yeah.
And it's ambiguous enough that it could be.
Yeah. But that is, is that what we're, the intent is here? And that is what, is it what the commission wishes?
And this is why I'm opposed to the lack of clarification here. If the commission wants to make it a long-term facility, let's do it. But if the commission wants to put a limit on it, on extended care, I think we should do that too. One or the other. But this way, it's in-between ground and it's ambiguous.
Well, and so this is Hanson. So I'm, I'm, right, so you're discharged, and then if you get readmitted, that's a new stay. So, uh, you know, that's not, that's not a long-term care facility. A long-term care facility is where you, you're there for a long term. If you get discharged, you get discharged. Um, and again, then if the doctor readmits you, you get readmitted. Um.
But would that be a, a serial readmission, Hanson?
If, so I, I don't wanna, so what I don't wanna do is I don't want to allow or block a doctor from prescribing something. First of all, there's only six, I believe there's, because I recollect, there's sixteen beds. Um.
Yeah.
And, and we have four hundred and some hundred thousand people in the county, um, divide that by a certain number of kids. I mean, we're not, if a doctor feels that there is a need to readmit somebody on, on a, another stay after they've been discharged, I don't wanna be the person, nor am I qualified to say, nah, you probably shouldn't do that.
Nobody's asking you to give a medical opinion. What we're talking about is a land use here.
No, we're talk, we're talking about, we're about, about limiting what a doctor can do, uh, at this facility. So that's, that's, and I, I would prefer, I, again, I, I, so there, there's no motion on the table right now because it was modified. But I, I, um, move, I have to go find that back. There's scrolling through the pages. Um.
Well, any other comment by other commissioners?
This is Terry. Um, I, I, I find the ninety day, uh, term totally specific enough for my satisfaction. And, and, uh, Kim, I just wanted to verify, there was a little typo at the end of that third item. Where it's supposed to say determination, and it says deamination.
No, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Right, right there.
So, so I, I move that we rec, the planning commission recommend zoning coded amendments to the city council to allow medical offices with extended care in the industrial administration and research districts subject to review and regulation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other comment? Then I'll call for the votes, Kim.
Chair Brassfield?
No.
Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
No.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries? Any other items? Kim, we have another item?
Yeah, our next agenda item, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, um, is four fifteen Spencer Street. And, um, before we get into that agenda item, I need to announce that I have a conflict of interest because I own a property within five hundred feet of the project site. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues, um, Christopher Schmidt and Andy Flower. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim.
Well, thank you, Kim, and thank you for the introduction. My name is, getting a little bit. My name is Chris Smith. I'm a research and planner for the city. Uh, I want to be continued to this presentation. So we are, again, we have received a, another appeal of the project at four fifteen Spencer. Uh, this is the second time this project was, uh, approved by the ARC and subsequently appealed to the planning commission. Uh, so staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the ARC approval. So just, uh, some background information, this is largely, uh, the same presentation that was provided for the ARC. Uh, some additional information at the end here. So, uh, here we see the project site that is located in Monterey. Uh, it is zone R three five, uh, which is our multifamily district, has a general planned designation of medium density residential, and it contains existing single-family residents. Um, just a little bit, a little bit of timeline background. So as I mentioned, the project, uh, was approved originally by the ARC. Uh, a different design, of course, uh, in November of twenty nineteen. Uh, two view and on privacy impacts were identified at that time. Uh, actually, that's, I'll make a correction. One, one of those view impacts also had a privacy, privacy impact as well. So it was, it was two parties, um, each having a, and a view and privacy impact. Um, in December, the planning commission granted the appeal, uh, of, of the neighbor who owned the property, uh, directly, uh, to the rear of the project site, uh, and gave the applicant guidance to better integrate the addition, uh, with the existing home and lower the plate heights in order to, uh, reduce the view impact to the neighbors uphill. In March, the applicant submitted a new application and that application was approved in May. Uh, staff did receive comments from the owner, uh, from four four two Archer Street at that time. However, the ARC found that the project impacts to views were not unreasonable. Uh, so I always like to include the, uh, project's development standard consistency table that you'll also find in your agenda report. Uh, if you've got any questions, I can refer back to this. Uh, so here we see the survey of the site. Uh, I just wanna note that there is a lot of photography, which I am sure you recall was one of the primary reasons that this, this project caused so many impacts to this funding neighborhood. So on the right-hand side, that's the Spencer Street side. Um, you will, you'll note there's a concrete carport that's at street level, uh, that, that elevation is at a hundred eighty-two feet. Just above that, uh, the actual hillside starts to go up at around a hundred and eighty-six. So there's already a, a, a large, you know, six, anywhere from six to eight feet, depending on the side of the carport that you measure, increase in height from the carport to the lot above where the house is located. The finished floor level of the existing house is about one ninety and. Uh, and then if you look at the far left side, uh, on the, on the, I believe that's the northern, northernmost side. Um, on, on the left side by there, the, the highest elevation of the site is at a one ninety-seven. So we, we see it, an increase from about one eighty-six to one ninety-seven on, on the actual site where the home is located. Uh, here you see the existing floor plan. And here's the proposed site plan. So it's, uh, the addition, if you recall, is in largely the exact same location. Uh, however, the, and the elevations that the design has significantly changed. Uh, so we received the floor, proposed floor plan, so they're adding a, uh, new bathroom and bedroom, which you can see on the left-hand side, a laundry room, and then this closet and stair, a stair leading up to another bedroom and, uh, bathroom and a great room with a balcony. Um, so here is the existing home. And the proposed front and rear elev, uh, elevations, the front, the left-hand side, and the rear on the right. The applicant has chosen an entirely different design. The previous design, which I'll show on, on some later slides, um, was intended to match the existing home. This has got kind of a new, entirely new feel with a flat, flat roof, uh, and kind of a Mediterranean style. Here are the side elevations. The top image, uh, is if you were viewing from the left side and you're going from the front, uh, and then the right side on the bottom. Um, here are the final materials. Um, so the applicant is, uh, going, proposing to use cement plaster as their primary interior. Uh, and then some of the other materials are, are very similar, um, to the previous design. Uh, so here are, uh, comparisons of the new design, original design, uh, at the front and rear elevations. So I added the red lines to show, uh, kind of the extent of the height, uh, lowering for the new design. And then I, you'll, you'll note, uh, notice that there are two lines. So the top line is showing the extent of the corner parapets, which are just these architectural features, um, where the lower line shows the actual extent of the overall, kind of most of the perimeter of, of the roofline there. So it has been reduced, um, by, I believe it was three feet with the, uh, overall roofline, which, uh, it's hard to tell, but it's, it's cladded with the tile, uh, roof, roof tiles there, um, is about eight inches lower than the parapets themselves. So it's largely about, uh, three feet and eight inches lower. Uh, here are the side elevations. I, I like to include this elevation because this is the one that can actually be seen from the street corner. Um, note that the applicant did, uh, try to better integrate the design with the existing home by, uh, creating this, this parapet on the existing portion of the home, uh, where the, the decking is located, uh, which, you can see my cursor is in this location here. Um, I also wanted to note, one of the, the comments, uh, or guidance that the planning commission gave to the applicant is to lower the, uh.
Plate.
Plate, which, correct, yeah, they've done that here by one and a half feet. Um, in addition to, you know, lowering of the overall height, about another one and a half to, to, to feet in general. So, uh, if you recall, when the original, uh, project was proposed, staff, uh, throughout the timeline between the ARC and planning commission hearing, you see four separate complaints. Uh, you've seen the green arrows, uh, are, are complaints, uh, regarding view impacts, and the blue arrows are regarding privacy impacts. And so I'm, I have a couple of photos from each of these property owners, um, see it on the following slides. So, uh, the owner at four four two Archer Street, uh, provided the photo back in, uh, November, just prior to the planning commission hearing. Uh, if you recall, this, this person did not actually reach out to us, uh, prior to the ARC hearing or even after the ARC, you'll, or during the ARC appeal hearing, rather. Um, but did contact staff, um, when the project was on the planning commission agenda back in November, or I guess it was actually December tenth. Uh, and then, um, the owner, Mr. Mathias, provided this photo on the bottom, uh, in, back in April to show that, that new impact. Um, and I, I just, I failed to mention, uh, these, these polygons that you see over both of these, these were created by myself. These were not created by any, the property owner. I just wanted to show what the, the comparison of the impact is and by creating this outline. Um, and I also felt that the, uh, story poles did not clearly depict these, uh, corner parapets. So I wanted to include that visualization, and it's, it's definitely just an estimate. Uh, these are currently not to scale. I wanna make that clear. But based on usually how, how big the, the story, excuse me, the, and the netting is, that was kind of what I based that estimate on. Um, and so you can see, uh, the applicant has lowered the height, uh, so significantly that this neighbor will still be able to see uh, blue bay views above the building and, uh, a lot of the coastline behind it as well. Um, this neighbor did not, uh, reach out to us for the second time around, though I did wanna include the impact in the analysis since we did have a photo for the first time it was provided. And so I, I included, uh, that polygon as well, just as an estimate. Uh, this is the photo that was provided by the appellant during their, uh, original protest of the project. Um, same, same deal occurred. I did not receive any new photos at the ARC hearing. Uh, so this is what I presented to the ARC with this polygon. Uh, and then, uh, the same, same thing happened here. Uh, these neighbors did not provide any new photos, although they did just provide comment today, which I forwarded to the planning commission. So if you had not seen it, please check your, your inboxes. So in order to approve this project, the ARC had to make the following findings, that the proposed siding, form, mass, and architectural style are appropriate, uh, in which they did make that finding based on staff recommendation that the project meets the development standards, uh, the mission revival design elements are consistent with the style commonly found in Monterey and in the new Monterey neighborhood. Um, the home is substantially set back from the street, consistent with some of our other, uh, design guideline requirements. Uh, it does have an improved single-family residential character where the planning commission found that the previous design was more of a multifamily design. Uh, and it is compatible with the surrounding area. If you go and look at a lot of the homes, uh, on this street and, and on many of the streets within New Monterey, it is very similar to those that have the same types of topography issues. And I've got some photos on some of the following slides to show those. Uh, the next finding is that its privacy and living environment are not impaired. Uh, they found that their views and privacy, uh, they did identify view and privacy impacts, uh, but they did not find them to be unreasonable. Uh, the next is that the project is consistent with city plans and the side guidelines, as I mentioned, it is. Uh, and then the last is that the exterior finish, color of materials, landscaping, lighting, and all other features are appropriate. Uh, they did make this finding. So the appellant, um, this is where the new, uh, portion from my presentation begins as, uh, as is obvious. Um, so the appellant makes the following arguments, uh, that the first being that the revised design unreasonably impacts the view and privacy at their home. Um, the massing is not appropriate, uh, the project should not be exempt from SEQA, and that the applicant should grade the lot to lower the development. Um, the ARC's path here is to find whether the ARC, excuse me, the planning commission staff must find whether the ARC aired their decision. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, the, the applicant made an effort to, uh, reduce those impacts uh, and, and by lowering, lowering the height, staff still, staff and the applicant still maintain that those privacy impacts are not unreasonable. Uh, it is a product of, of living in an urban environment where lot sizes are, are, you know, relatively small compared to some, some, uh, larger lot areas, uh, maybe not in Monterey, but throughout country, really. Um, in terms of SEQA, um, you know, projects of this scale are generally exempt from SEQA, especially when they're already developed sites. There, there really is nothing special about this site that, that, uh, is protected by SEQA. Um, and then lastly, um, the, the appellant believes the, uh, the lot should be graded to lower development, which is simply inconsistent with what our single-family design guidelines require, which is really not do these types of large cotton-filled projects, as those actually have really big impacts to the surrounding neighborhood in terms of, um, things like stormwater runoff and, and structural issues with surrounding, uh, retaining walls and stuff like that. Um, so I, I showed this graphic, uh, in the previous appeal. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate that there are some, um, issues with, with the surrounding area that exacerbate the si- situation for the surrounding neighborhood. And that's primarily that this, the slope, um, does rapidly increase towards their direction, as you can tell, um, those that. As you can tell, those that have view impacts are basically at the end of this arrow or adjacent to it. And that makes sense because the hill is rising in that direction and the addition is located or kind of nearly in the center of that lot. Another graphic that I put last time, this I think helps you understand the scale of development throughout the neighborhood, especially at this block. You know, I think this proposed home is kind of really in scale with a lot of the buildings nearby. I showed this graphic before as well. So this shows, on the blue rectangle, it shows the first floor setback and the orange rectangle, it shows the second floor setback. And then I created this green rectangle to show kind of the hypothetical development. If this applicant decided they wanted to rotate their development, that the impact from that rotation would greatly impact the views of the neighbors more so than what's proposed now, where he's created this narrow structure that is intended to still provide views on either side of it. This was a photo that was originally provided by the appellant. This time, I did not show any polygon of this image to the ARC, but I thought it was a good method to show to the planning commission, to show that view and massing. And then moving on to photos of homes in New Monterey. So New Monterey has a lot of topography. So I think this was on Hawthorne Street, where a good portion of Hawthorne Street has retaining walls that I think are in excess of 15 feet high. And it was not common for the city to require those lots to be completely graded so that the lots behind them could maintain, you know, their view or existing views or privacy. Likewise, I think it's not, a lot of these photos just show that the scale of the development is very similar to a lot of the developments nearby. I thought this was a very good example. The retaining wall height is very similar, maybe a little bit shorter, but they've got a second-story addition at the rear that is very similar in scale, although it might be a little bit lower. There's another one. This was really, I believe this was just up the street from the project site. Or I think this was a multifamily building.
Looks like.
This is very nearby as well. That is a single family. Kind of a bad photo, but I thought it was a cool shot showing the really tall retaining wall height. And this is this property. You can see that ivy-covered wall here. And one more photo. So I guess the point of showing all these photos is to show that the project really not so far out of the scale of a lot of the developments in the area. And that is one thing that the New Monterey area plan encourages is, or recommends, rather, is to keep the similar development styles as the neighborhood. So that concludes my presentation. Again, the staff recommendation is to deny the appeal. I'm available. The applicant and appellant do have some slides here that I'm going to control for them while they speak. So if you've got any questions for me or them, please let us know.
Thanks, Chris. Do we have any questions of Chris?
Just clarifying question. And maybe this question is more for Dan or Terry. Is cement plaster the same as stucco?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Since this is a re-projection of a project, any other questions?
This is Terry. Thanks, Chris, for your excellent presentation. I'm sorry to come at this from left field. I may have asked this the last time we saw it, but could you just refresh me? If an application has non-conforming parking, what triggers them needing to bring that non-conforming parking into conformity?
If they were to add, this is an R3, so if they were to add a unit, that unit would have to comply. But otherwise, there is a section of the non-conforming ordinance within the city code that says a site is not, a use is not non-conforming strictly because it does not have parking. So they basically have to voluntarily provide that parking.
Okay, okay. So this is, the parking is not an issue. Thanks. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Chris, do you have the phone number of people calling for public comment?
I do not have any.
I should ask, is anyone?
Whoa.
We have a unique sound issue. Is anybody there that can allow public comment?
Jennifer will be helping with that.
Okay, and or actually an applicant's, if he wished to make a presentation, would be nice.
Hi there, Chair. I am so sorry. This is Jennifer. I'm taking over for Kim while she is recused. That was my computer making that feedback, so I apologize for that. That dial-in number is 831-225-0330. Once again, 831-225-0330. And the caller's ID is 1927648.
Well, I'll ask the question, do we have a presentation by the applicant?
Yes, I do have a presentation. I was wondering if I could, are we going to hear from the appellant's first or the applicant?
I'm sorry, are you the applicant?
Yes, I am the applicant.
Would you state your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Robert Gallardi. I'm the owner of the property.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. So Chris, well, first of all, I'd like to thank the planning commission for the guidance that you've given me in terms of how to adjust my architectural and engineering and everything else. And it did require a new application and it's cost a bit of money to go through this process, but especially given the view from 442 Archer, I think we've created something that's a great improvement. If you wouldn't mind showing the, could you show the slide with the south and west elevation? Is that hard to dig up?
Which one of it?
Yeah, the south. Yeah, we'll get to my photos close to the end of what I'm presenting. How much time do I have?
Reasonable time.
What does you need? Okay, I won't take a lot of your time. Okay, so this is the south elevation. Yeah, so the south elevation, you can see, you know, the effort that we took to make it look like it. One of the criticisms was it looked like a house attached to a house. And well, I agree. The old land did look like a house attached to a house. And the reason why we went with a flat roof design is because, well, it's just unusual. I've never seen a siding, a shingle siding house with a flat roof on it. A house right across the street is a Spanish Revival house, has the same type of architecture. So it is in conformity and that was a house that was built probably about the same time as this house. And so we're just changing it to that. What I'd like about this new design is, I don't know if you know, the picture that Chris shows of the permanent house as existing, that whole retaining wall in the front of the property has been replaced with a new wall, but still with the old Carmel stone. We're going to be incorporating the Carmel stone into the bottom corners of some of these, some of the parks. And it's going to, with the stucco siding and the colors and everything, it's really going to conform and look beautiful with the Carmel stone. It's already very much a part of the front of the lot. So the parameters that you guys gave us were one to two feet to lower the whole structure. And the New Monterey neighborhood's additions did more like two to three feet. We lowered the entire height, the whole total height, three feet to the parapets. And there's eight inches that goes down to the, so most of it is three feet, eight inches lower than what it was, which exceeded what you asked. I went by ceiling height in terms of plate height. The ceilings are all, that's a big loss for me. I had cathedral ceilings on the top floor and nine-foot ceilings on the bottom floor, which I prefer, but everything's at eight-foot ceilings now. And then the other thing is just to make it all look like one house. And I think that that's, again, that those are the three things that you guys asked for. Let's see. Now, I want to go to the appellant's points because he's going to bring them up. You might go to, let's see, well, first of all, one of the things that appellant brings up, and I mean, the appellant's a nice guy and everything, but I had tried to reach out to the appellant. I can't get any response. The first contact that I have ever was about a year and a half ago. And I had torn down a bunch of bamboo and that bamboo actually increased his view a great deal. And, but I, no comment about that, but I just wanted to know, you know, can we put in a fence now? And I left my phone number with this tenant. He went through the trouble of finding-
Excuse me, if we could just stick on the project.
What I'm emphasizing is that, is that he's a very private person. He doesn't return my calls. He won't call me. He wants to interact by post-mail. And so it's very difficult to talk about just about anything that way. And I've contacted him now three times with no response, other than that one letter by mail. So anyway, let me go to, so some of the issues he brought up, I can just tell you now as we, as we're talking here. He talks about that he's worried about the garage. The garage, if there is ever a garage put in there, it could be well back for his views to make it the view side of the house. It's the only place a garage could go. It has to be set back further up the hill. Not going to be an issue. Let's see.
Again, let's try to state of the project.
Okay. So, let me see. He was mentioning about the, I'm addressing his points. He's addressing that it's adjacent to single-family dwellings and it's true that there are single-family dwellings behind it, but on both sides of me are both are multiple multifamily dwellings. And let's see. Let's see, he had reference to, I don't know. Somebody's referred to, some of the things in his exhibits are a lot of old pictures that don't reflect what the new, what the new design is. He does refer pretty often to invasion of privacy. See if we could go with the appellant's exhibit. Exhibit D, the second photo of exhibit D, can we go there? I think it's, I think maybe it's one more down.
Chris, I'm not seeing, this is Hudson. I'm not seeing anything. I see your C in the middle of your screen and that is all I see.
Okay. Picture, Hudson?
I'm showing that it's showing, so can, is anybody else seeing that?
I'm seeing exhibit B on the right-hand side, exhibit D in the photograph. Likewise.
I'm going to get out and try and get back in. That's what I'm going to try and do and see if that does anything. So.
This photo shows the existing, this is the way the story poles are now. There's a couple of story poles that I left to show what the original height was. They're actually on the front side. Obviously, you really can't see the difference in height. Very drastic, it is a drastic difference. So to resolve the privacy issue here is with vegetation. I removed a whole bunch of vegetation. There was a big bamboo forest back there that can be removed. And I don't know if you could notice on the, on the right-hand side there, the right-hand side of the photo, there's a bunch of vegetation there that's actually blocking the bay view. If the appellant would like to interact with me, that would be wonderful. And I could even work with him through lower that vegetation there so that will improve his view of the bay at that point. I don't know if you guys can see that. And then also since that whole, that whole shack back there is being removed, it should also help improve the view from there. But also, I mean, just with vegetation. Now, Chris, if we could go to, let's see. Gee. Sorry that I'm taking. Okay. Let's go ahead and go with my photos, Chris. Okay, let's do that one. Okay, so this one shows, I want to kind of compare what my privacy impact is on his house versus my uphill neighbor. As you can see, my addition is much further back away from this property line than my uphill neighbor is. So Chris, let's go to another photo. That's what I have to excavate in order to, let's go to another photo. Okay, so here, the appellant's house is the yellow one that's sort of in the foreground. And as you can see, there's a privacy, I guess you would consider a privacy issue there with the apartment building behind. And I don't have the luxury of, you know, I'm incapable of going to his backyard and seeing if that looks directly into his house. But if it doesn't look directly into this house, it's because of vegetation that's my property and his property. And that would be a way to resolve the privacy issue there. Let's see, let's go with one more photo, Chris. I think there's one more. Okay, yeah, and here you can see the comparison. On the right, it's kind of hard to see, but the outline of my, of my structure and then the apartment building on the uphill. I think you can see that there's, in terms of just the massing, that massing is a word that is used a lot. Your apartment building's a lot more massive. And then, you know, in terms of due diligence on these things, I mean, I mean, in owning a property, especially one with a view, you pay attention to who's downhill. I mean, this, my property came up for sale. I had no idea it was impacting the view of the old house. I didn't find that out until I applied and it's been difficult to work with the appellant in terms of just trying to discuss matters. Maybe you could go to, let's see, so. Oh, I do, there's another letter. Maybe Mr. Mathis's latest letter, Chris, could you put that up?
Yeah, give me one moment.
Part of the, part of the letter I don't really understand, but the main thing here I want to address is, because he's talking about moving back, extending ten foot of retaining wall, and I don't understand that part, but that would be weighed on what the planning commission requested of me. And, but he does mention that I did add another step, that the ground floor is up a little higher than it was. And the reason why I had to do that is that the patio that's behind the house, the existing concrete patio, right now slopes toward the house and in order to make that slope away from the house, I have to raise, I had to go, I found out I had to go up higher in order to meet that. I may have a lot of climbing up. There's going to be a retaining wall on that side anyway, but it's going to be a little bit higher because of the, because of getting that slope away from the house for that patio, without having to tear out full lunch and do a lot more excavating. This is the way. There's a lot of other issues in terms of those steps, it's just the tolerances there are really, really tight. Lowering the ground floor is, you're already having to excavate a couple of feet on the upside and going further than that, the first two feet is fairly loose. Once you get below that, there's a lot of cemented sand. I would have had some places to go into that and it takes jackhammers to get into that. So, you know, this is, once you get about one, about four, more than two feet, then it gets really, really difficult. And let's see, so anyway, but I did talk to my engineer. I don't know if we can go down a complete step, but it looks like instead of lowering the lower floor, what we could do, and this is just again to help accommodate Mr. Mathis' ass, I really, I mean, I appreciate his, you know, his distress about this, is that it looks like we may be able with the cantilever and everything, it's a cantilever about five inches, so it looks like maybe three inches down, maybe the floors. And so that make that impact to, to lower that part. Again, I thank you. I think these are all things that could be easily resolved. You know, I did my, I did my due diligence and I have met and exceeded what the planning commission asked of me and the architectural review committee agreed. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Chair, could you please unmute yourself? It looks like we're also missing our vice chair. I'd like to request the commissioner to speak up or perhaps the chair can-
Okay, okay, I'm here.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Sandy. I couldn't see, I'm so sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Sandy.
Do we have, thank you for the presentation. Do we have anybody else who wishes to make a presentation, Chris?
I believe the appellant's are on this call as well.
I'm sorry?
I believe the appellant is on this call. He had some photos that he had provided.
Okay, if we would, let's hear from him.
Hi, this is Jennifer. Is the appellant's last name Mathis? We do have one public caller with the last four digits, two, six, four, zero. I believe that is one of the appellant.
That is the owner of 404-2 Archer Street.
Okay, I will, I will get them on the line. Hi there, you're on with the planning commission. Hi, can you hear me? Hi there, we're ready for your public comment.
Is anybody home?
Yes, I can hear you.
I can't hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, no. Yes, I can hear you.
How about his background noise?
Line unmuted.
Hi there, is that better?
Yes, now I can hear you. I can hear you now.
Perfect, thanks so much. Go, go, go ahead with your public comment. Sorry, your appellate comment.
I'm 404-2 Archer. This is Glenn Mazzia calling. I did see in both of the drawings, there was a retaining wall that goes around the house and that's being moved back for the patio reason. And I know how to dig in that sandhill, you know, that's, it gets a little compact, but I'm sure there's no problem to do it. Any retaining wall without drainage isn't going to work, just like the one that failed in front of the house, which is approximately six feet tall. I can only say that, to say that I'm satisfied with the amount of view I'm losing after 14 years, that view has become more precious, just like life becomes more precious when you get cancer, you know. So I'm just trying to say that I don't know I have anything to stand on, other than if the first floor was the same floor, I'd have an extra two feet. That's all my letter said. And it can be done, you don't have to be a San Luis Obispo architect to make this job work, you know. So, you know, my daughter went there, I understand, and I can only hope that things will improve and that I can get at least some of my pay back. This is signing off, Glenn Mazzia, 404-2 Archer.
Thanks so much for your public comment, Glenn.
You are the last party in the conference. You will hear silence until the conference begins. Line muted.
So I believe the appellant is on the Hangouts Eat Call here at Emerald. Your presentation, now would be the time. Perhaps you're still muted, I'm not there.
I'm sorry, do we have anybody else who wants to make a comment?
Looks like he's not.
Sure, would you like to make-
Do we have any incoming calls?
Jennifer, if you would like, if you could please announce that phone number one more time, perhaps they're trying to call in.
Absolutely. That phone number is 225030. And the conference line, 7648.
Do we have any calls?
There are no calls on the line at the time, but I do see that the appellant is in the Google Meet. Oh, sorry about that. Looks like we did just receive a public comment, so I will open that up right now, if that's in the future.
Appreciate it.
Line unmuted.
Hi there, you're on with the planning commission. Please proceed with your public comment. This is for the caller with the last four digits, 3542.
Hello, this is Gwen, this is Gwen DeAmeral.
Hi there, thanks so much for calling. You're on with the public, with the planning commission. Go forward with your, with your public comment.
Okay. First, I want to say my name is Gwen DeAmeral and I am one of the two appellant's that will be speaking on this matter. The other will be joining following my comments on the numbers that I provided, Mr. Schnett. First, I'd like to say good afternoon and thank you very much for your time this afternoon. COVID nineteen has created an unprecedented time for all of us and your commitment today and your dedication in today's matter is greatly appreciated by myself. We are here for a second time before the planning commission with the same concerns regarding the proposed plans for 415 Spencer in New Monterey. The issue is both of privacy and our shared views and the extreme overall massiveness of this house. That this location is not beneficial to the character of our neighborhood or the surrounding neighbors who have provided letters and phone calls and needs greater revision on its implementation. Under the New Monterey Area Plan for Urban Design Initiative, it mentions the architectural review committee should attempt to provide a balance when evaluating new construction. And we believe they have failed in this ability to do so with this application. When surrounding homes are giving up either privacy, their views, and the neighborhood characterization, all in order to allow one person to maintain his existing view, privacy, and gaining another fully unobstructed bay view, this is not a balance. And I would ask Chris to please show photo number one. I'm not able to see, but-
It is up.
It is up, okay. And I also, I forgot to mention, I also want to thank Planner Fowler, Flower, excuse me, as well for the assistance in this challenge here. We have no objection with the applicant's style, whether it's Spanish or Mediterranean or Craftsman, but we do dispute the applicant's right to build a second floor. No, excuse me, we do not dispute the applicant's right to build his second floor, but his elected choice in order to achieve that should not be at the cost of others. The applicant has pointed out that his lot is zoned for a four unit apartment building and feels that while some views will end up a bit impacted, the allowed four unit building would have completely eliminated the views. This type of intimidation knowingly omits that he lacks the water credit for a four unit building. The applicant indicated that it was cost prohibitive for him to dig down to lower his house. However, he purchased this property with full knowledge of what it would entail and its impacts, especially given his new career of remodeling and managing rental properties in Gonzalez and Monterey. While the applicant has the right to develop as many properties as he chooses, this investment should not come at the cost of those residents who have enjoyed the charm and privacy of their homes in New Monterey. We object to the staff's interpretation of this policy that is being used for your recommendations to planning. We strongly believe that the planning staff's misinterpretation and the downplaying of the impacts and perceived integration are not reasonable as they pertain to the project's location, cumulative impact, the significant effect, the hazardous waste, and the impact on the surrounding historical resources in our community. This spec home applicant may have chosen to have his home removed from the historical resource inventory list, but that does not entitle him to develop the existing historical environment, the way he is doing with this massive project, with additional bathrooms that lack the water allocation and partially contribute to the square footage that we are seeing. Staff has expressed that this is a medium density residential zone, yet fails to disclose the applicant's lack of the required water allowance. The applicant's project does integrate into the character of the historical neighborhood it's adjacent to. The applicant's second story addition is not consistent with developments in the neighborhood because it's not a multifamily home. Its design does not follow the likeness of the single family home and its heaviness is causing it to look massive. In your packet, I believe it's exception E, but it's marked D in your packet, the staff indicated as part of the secret exemption that the project site is not located on a hazardous waste site, according to the State Water Resource Control Board Geo Tracker Site. The Geo Tracker Site is a state internet accessible database that's only used by the state to track and archive compliance data. And seeing that this bathroom is non-compliant, do we really think it would be part of this database? I would like Chris to please show photo two. The staff failed to recognize that there's no legal allowance or documentation for this bathroom and the non-conforming shed once used for occupancy on the property and its illegal connection with the Monterey City Sewer. What we do know is that no environmental health agency has been sent to look into this situation since the planning office was notified at the last appeal hearing. Furthermore, this blatant disregard by staff to not call into question his applicant's added bathrooms on his submitted plans versus what is the actual determination is very alarming to us. We do not understand how a set of building plans can be submitted to the city of Monterey, the ARC, and now the planning commission that includes bathrooms that aren't available for allocation. All private property development that requires a water permit is limited to the water credits associated with the specific site. So why would the city of Monterey waste their time and resources on submitted plans that are deceptive and inaccurate in showing bathrooms that are not permitted? During the planning commission meeting on December 10th, 2019, the staff's analysis indicated that the MPWMD would review and sign off on these plans and is the required party prior to cite lack of water fixtures and make the determination. A standard condition of approval states that projects may not move forward without approval from this agency at the building permit stage. This is not true. I spoke to Stephanie Lott with the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District on December 6th, and she indicated that the city makes the determination. She went on to say that on April 2019, the district inspector did see two bathrooms and one of those bathrooms was in the shed at the back of the property. This bathroom, however, would not be allowed under the ordinance number 98. Thus, it's the city's determination to recognize this water credit and its deficit. We are curious to know if the city of Monterey's required residential property inspection due during the applicant's escrow to the city of Monterey indicated any further transparency on this matter, as there's no mention of it in any of the planning documents. We strongly disagree with staff's background discussion where he believes that the home is sited appropriately due to the large setbacks from all the property lines and its massive impact was due to the topography of the project site and surrounding lots, when in fact, it's the applicant's choice for such a sitting. If Chris could please show photos three and photos four. Staff justifies the massive impact due to the topography and the surrounding of the hillside that is topographically challenged. We are troubled by this as it appears that staff is biased rather than pointing out more objectively that the impact is created by the project and negatively impacts multiple homes. If the home is permitted to be built, it will be close to the same level of the neighboring duplex. The applicant's project is within a medium family zone, but the project is a single home that lacks the water credits for this project. Staff has indicated that the project is both feasible and equitable, when in fact, it is neither. The applicant is placing his own limits on what he is willing to invest in his investment property at the inequity cost of his neighbors. The photos illustrate three sets of windows that are looking down into our home, bedroom, bathroom, and kitchen, along with our backyard. This project also will be peering down into my neighbor's home as well. This negative impact creating such issues is minimized by staff. The staff wrote to a neighbor that I was appealing this project at this site for the second time due to perceived privacy and view impact. This comment distorts the truth and the proposed new development looks down into our bedroom, our bathroom, and our kitchen. It's a fact, it's not a perception. I would appreciate it, Chris, if you could show photos five and six. Under the staff's analysis, staff indicated that the photo that was shown after the proposed massing and view impact, it's included in your packet. The photo taken claims to have been taken approximately 100 feet away from the story poles to our home. This distance is actually less from our property as our neighbor is 100 feet from that site. We would even question as to whether or not the story poles in the beginning of this application and the re- and the recent modification were actually certified by a licensed surveyor or engineer, and if so, is that certification included in these plans? The applicant stated that the design and building for the house is due to the engineering challenges and the topography, which he indicates are to be cut by hand. This, again, is the applicant's choice. These circumstances should have been taken into account when the applicant purchased this home. This home could easily be remodeled, but the applicant wants more, and that choice creates the housing heights issue, the multiple negative impacts to the surrounding neighbors like privacy, and the taking of neighbors' historical views. The applicant stated in his July 8th letter that the clearing of his vegetation and the removal of the fence made our current views possible, and this fact just is not true. My family and I have owned this home and enjoyed its historical privacy and partial views for over 91 years. Our home's historical relevance should be protected. Instead, we are now looking at this. And if Chris could please show photos seven and eight. This is what we're looking. I find it interesting that the developer indicated he did not wish to develop on the northern side of his property as it would be closer to the apartment, and he didn't want to block their views from those individual balconies. Yet he will take from the neighbor what you will see in photo nine, please, Chris.
Go ahead, Ben.
Photo nine visible?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all right. Staff is of the opinion that this project is acceptable. Staff's analysis on the November 6th, 2019 indicated that the applicant's addition would not create any unreasonable privacy impact because no new windows or doors create an unreasonable view into neighboring bedrooms or bathrooms. Prior to this application, we had no windows viewable into our home, creating issues of privacy. We are 90 feet away from this project, yet staff's analysis nor is the second-floor windows. These new windows create a very unreasonable privacy impact. Please show photo 10. Staff contends that our concern over a significant cumulative impact is invalid because the city has not received any additional applications for a successive garage development project. The applicant said he was saving room in the backyard for his garage at the November 2019 ARC meeting. He wanted to keep his outside storage attached to his home rather than having to attach a garage to his home and lose the storage. The applicant's current setbacks and the narrow designs are preserved only so he can have a garage at a later date. This, along with staff's conversation where the applicant mentioned the garage, is to suffice the point of the cumulative impact. If staff is so certain that this will not be the case, we would like to see a condition for this project and a deed restriction that indicates the garage would not be permitted, thus putting the cumulative impact to rest. I would like to close my addressing by addressing a few remarks from the staff in your packet and clarify what I believe has been a mischaracterization of the facts and events. He notes that we were contacted as a courtesy, and I would remind that we reached out to planning on February 25th and 28th to find out the status of this project and expressed our concerns over the looming story poles that had been up for an extensive duration in creating hazards as they had gone through the winter storms. I did not hear back until March 2nd. I was told that the applicant was resubmitting new plans by the end of the week. On March 11th, after not hearing anything, I again emailed the planner for an update. I then received the new plans, but I was not asked for any feedback. The email reference was sent to a third party on March, excuse me, on May 8th, and it was not addressed to me. In the body of the letter, the planner indicated that he intended to send emails to everyone regarding the upcoming ARC meeting on May 20th. This was not done. It was later discovered by the planner that the email was stuck in a draft and never sent. I would like to stress that this took place six days prior to Monterey County's shelter-in-place ordinance. I can only say that for myself, it did not require the Monterey County Shelter-in-Place Ordinance for me to shift my daily courses in life, and I'm sure many of you and your families have done the same. I would like to correct what the reference made in your planning report regarding the December 10th meeting. The planner was asked if anyone from ARC visited our property. My understanding of this statement was that it pertained to our property, seeing that we were the ones that filed the appeal. No one from ARC did a site visit to our property, and no one from ARC visited our property the second time. This is a true statement and not a false statement, as staff has noted in their report. In fact, I personally invited representatives from the Planning Commission and the planner to our home back in December of 2019, and then later escorted them to 442 Archer. Many homeowners, including myself, are looking to each of you to uphold the Monterey Land Use Plan and support our appeal. I thank you for your time, and again, I want to thank both Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Flower for their support on my photos and the support to do this meeting in this format. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have one more?
Thank you so much. We do have one more caller. I will open that up right now. So caller with the last number 1303, you are on with the Planning Commission.
Excuse me, we, excuse me, the second appellant to this has dialed in, and he was dialed in for the first portion of this meeting. It's the 2946 number.
Okay, oh, so you're... Perfect, go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can everyone else hear?
Everybody else here?
Sounds like that's a go.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the Planning Commissions and Missioners and staff for giving their time to these issues.
State your name, please.
My presentation will be a lot shorter than Mr. DeAmrell. Five letters are on file.
Can you please state your name?
Yeah, my name is John Wilson, W-I-L-L-S-E-N.
Thank you.
And five letters were sent against this project with zero for the project, and three of them were from neighbors on Archer who's...
Did you turn off your background noise?
I don't, okay.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, and three of the letters are from people whose views will be drastically reduced, and you heard from Mr. Matthews on the phone about the view he has enjoyed for 14 years, and that's going to be taken away from him. I'm going to be quoting briefly from the new Monterey area plan put together by the City of Monterey and issued in October 1991 without any, there were no changes to it. And they put out very clear directions on development, and I think Mr. Schmidt has mentioned this. And where an existing house or houses have an established view of Monterey Bay, the ARC should provide a balance between the preservation of that view and establishing use and view potential for new development. Also, constructions and new structures or additions to existing structures should not fully block views from existing developed lots, should be in scale with the existing built environment, which this is not, it's massive compared to the other projects that have been built, should save healthy trees, and should harm, not harmonize with site topography. I think you can see from the photos that DeAmrell showed that this is a massive building in the middle of other structures, and it just overpowers everything. And view analysis shall be done by the ARC for construction of new structures or additions to existing structures. Where a proposed project would block existing views from Monterey Bay, the project shall be redesigned with the goal of providing a balance between protecting all a part of the view for the existing unit and also providing an equivalent view for the proposed project. They talk about shared views. In this case, the appellant has one full view right now from the bottom floor of his house, and if he's allowed to build a second story, he will have a large panoramic view. So he will have two views, while conservatively, four people on Archer Street will have their views substantially reduced by at least 50%. So that is not sharing, that is taking from one person, four people, and giving it to one person. The problem with this, it's not, it's not the design or anything else, it's just the topography is not suited for this second story. The conservative, we could see from the front to the back, there's, it's on a hill that goes up, it's probably about 30 degrees. So every foot that you, that you're making the addition longer is going backwards, and it's raising the house, the back of the house up, so that on one of the photos, you can see that the back of the house is almost on the same elevation as the houses on Archer. That's why it is, it's, it's looked so massive from all the other houses. It's like someone put a scene up in front, not like we're looking down over it, he has built it, he wants to build it right in front of four houses. And this is addressed in the new Monterey plan. Building height is currently measured based on average ground level measured at the midpoint of each side of the house. Because of this, buildings on slope sites may have elements considerably higher than the 25-foot building height. All of New Monterey's hillside area and use of the average ground level can result in buildings which are not complementary to the neighborhood, such as this. They further go on to say, in the design review process, building height should be minimized by stepping up or down the hillsides. The applicant can build downward, he could excavate to reduce, but he chooses not to. I'm going to re, just repeat that. Building height should be minimized by stepping up or down the hillsides rather than using the average ground level as the only criteria for evaluating height. This would lower the profiles of buildings on slope sites. The measurement of heights to the midpoint of a pitched roof as currently defined in the zoning ordinance would continue to be acceptable. So, plain and simple, this site is not designed for a project as massive as this. If, if the site were to be excavated where everything could be lowered, that would be acceptable, but taking away four people's views and giving an extra view is not balanced. And the Monterey, New Monterey plan says that explicitly that they should be planned and existing views should not be taken away. Our house was built in 1929, and 415 Spencer was built in 1935. The applicant took the building off the historical recognition while ours is still on that. And when that was built in 1929, we have the views we have now. And historically, we should be able to maintain those and not have something put up that blocks most of our view. So this does not seem very fair, and I think the applicant was aware of this when he saw it, but unfortunately, he didn't think about his neighbors. So thank you for your patience and time. Any questions?
Chair, rest of you are muted.
I'd like to...
Any questions of the, this person?
I'm sorry, I do believe we have one more public comment.
So that was a public comment.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept it right now. Hi there, you're on with the Planning Commission. Can I have your name, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi there, I can hear you, can everyone else?
Yeah.
Sounds great, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, this is, this is Dylan Nappick, 404 Archer. Thanks for taking the call. So, Luxon said, I don't want to take too long with this, but this house is going to have a garage put on the back of it at one point in time in the future, is that correct?
Uh-huh. We do not know.
Sorry?
There is no plan currently to do that, there is an idea, but there is no plan.
Okay.
That's not before us today.
Okay, but if that should happen, there's going to have to be some significant grading taking place anyway. And I'm on the field trip, happened to come visit the site, but it still occurs to me the positioning of that lot is such that it could easily come down. And that house was built in 1935, which makes it 80 years old with an 80-year-old foundation, 80-year-old framing in it. I'm not seeing the cost savings of trying to salvage that house and force the building to go up in height, and so I would urge the Planning Committee to investigate this a little further before making up your mind.
Is that your presentation?
Yes, that's all I have to say, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Do we have any other calls?
I was still...
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say there are no current callers. Um, yeah, the one person I have is just the commenter who just spoke, so...
Okay, let's bring it back to the commission.
I, I, I still, I wanted to make a comment because there's some falsehoods that have been put forth, and I would like to address those.
You already made your public comment, didn't you?
Yes, but I need to address the falsehoods that were put forth by neighbor.
Yeah, the, this is Hudson Reed, I've been chaired, this, he's already spoken and had his opportunity to speak, and so that's...
That's my comment, sir, you already made your comment, we, we don't do rebuttal, thank you.
I also do, I did get another commenter. Is it okay if we open that back up, Chair?
Please, please.
Okay, thank you. Hi, caller with the last number is 3542, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Hi, my name is Tim Huntington, I live across the street from this property, I'm not directly impacted by this, my brother, but I am, I've been following along, and I've got a very brief comment. In fact, the original appeal was upheld before, with the original plan, and my understanding is it was upheld because of the view impact, and if you look at photo nine, we can see, I actually created a photo nine. I took the original picture of the story poles and the new plan, the corner of the roof is actually higher than the original plan, although it's now a flat roof, and I put the, put the orange line that sort of shows... And I put the, put the orange lines that sort of shows roughly where the flat roof will be. And the change in view is negligible. You may be able to see the empty suites now and the hotel, the beach, but the amount of ocean that you can see is a big change. And for that reason, if the previous appeal was upheld because of view impaction, I think this appeal should be upheld for the same reason. And that's why I've got to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And we do have one more public comment, so I will let that on right now. Hi, caller with the last four digits, 1303. You are on with the planning commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line.
What was that?
I'm on the wrong line. I've already spoken, sorry.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you. And with that, it looks like our public comments are, have already spoken.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, what's your thoughts?
This is Hudson and, and what, what do I want to say? There's a lot of things I want to say. First of all, I, I think that, that the project is in scale. I think that the way the lot is set up, that it may have the slight appearance of being disproportionate, but I mean, in reality, it's in scale to the neighborhood. When you have this, a very large view and you're, the closer you are, things look bigger than the farther away you are, they look smaller. So I think it's in, it's in scale to the neighborhood, so I have no problem with that. And then in terms of the views sharing and not sharing, well, I mean, the way I look at a view is, the view is a totality of everything I see, not just one aspect of the view. The ocean is part of, and the blue is part of the view. You know, the, the planning commission asked to be reduced. It was reduced. He's done everything we've asked him to do. You know, I, I don't agree that the, 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 the impact or the, the benefit is negligible. I think it, it adds to the view. I mean, there's this, there's a, there, you can see above the, you can see the blue, the, the whitewater above the house. You can see the beach. You know, I, I, I think you're gonna always have this issue. You're always gonna have an issue where you have somebody downhill and uphill. And how do you resolve that? I think that this is a fair compromise. It's not, you know, I, what do you want to say? I mean, it, it's a fair compromise. I'm not gonna say that you couldn't make it better. But again, I don't know if that's the standard we have asked them to do when we first rejected the, or, or accepted the appeal the previous time. So I personally think, you know, you're gonna have neighbors, you're gonna have, uh, people are gonna take different positions on it, but I think, I think that the project is fine going forward.
I would agree.
And I, and I, sorry, and then I would, I would deny the appeal, so.
I would agree with that. In denying the appeal, that's the issue before us. Did the A R C err in approving the second edition of architectural edits that were requested by the planning commission? They went ahead and they did everything that was requested. What is not mentioned, but not so much, is that the neighborhood is an assortment of one, two, and multi-story, uh, single-family homes and apartment buildings. And this property is at the end of a long line of two and three-story apartment buildings and is not out of proportion with them. And I think that the fact that it's a single-family renovation speaks very well of the person who's doing the renovation. He could easily have built a three-story apartment, but he isn't. He's building a two-story home. And I do not believe that the A R C made a mistake or erred in their approval of the edited architectural plan.
Thanks, Eddie. Any other comments?
This is Gary. So I, I really sympathize with the appellants. I, I realize when you live on a hillside with your views for decades, it's how visceral and terrible the reaction is to lose any part of that view. It's really hard to understand the anxiety that these people suffer from that. So I, I realize, you know, all these cases that we see with view impacts, there's always somebody uphill who really feels like they're getting the run, wrong end of the deal. And it's, it's hard for us to, you know, be fair. In this case, the, the people uphill usually do feel like they're really getting the wrong end of it. But on the other hand, did the A R C err in its approval? I don't believe they did. The city has view policies. It seems to me the staff and A R C reviewed the project correctly and it does follow those view policies. So I also agree that we should deny the appeal.
Thanks, Gary. Any other comments?
Mike Dawson, yes, I do have one. There's several of us here on this panel that, that were on the A R C and we did see, we did see a lot of very similar issues. I think that, that the, the owner, the owner did follow through and, on the, on the request that we made. And, and I think that we should just, we should deny the appeal. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, Dan Fletcher. Nobody wins in these situations where you're trying to find a solution that strikes a balance that's clear. When I look at what's the revisions that have been made, I can see that some good faith effort has been put in to minimizing the impacts based on our, our recommendations to the, to the applicant. When I look at the, what has been done, I always look at it obviously from an architect's standpoint and ask myself, what would I do? And the question is, is there still more that can be done? And yes, I think there is, but I don't think it's significant enough to satisfy the neighbors. I think in the, this whole process, one of the things I feel would be helpful coming from neighbors is to try to quantify what would make them happy so that you can see how far apart you are in trying to find that balance. And, you know, and that's our job too as well, obviously. I, I guess I'm gonna have to say I'm in support of this project. I wish there was a way to find a solution that makes everybody happy, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Thank you. Steve, you have any comments?
Unfortunately, for the, for the neighbors, you know, your easement for light and view don't exist. And what does exist is the right given by the city code to try and balance the, the views of both parties. And in that situation, I think it was previously mentioned, it's likely that at least one of the parties is not gonna be satisfied. But as far as the review in this case, I agree with everything that's been said by the members of the, of the commission, and I would vote to deny the appeal also.
Thank you. I, I, one of the neat things is, is everybody says a lot of the questions I have, so thank you all for that. I agree. Unless we could make submarine houses that maintain a view for everybody else, we're not going to fix this problem. In other cultures, the, the village leaders, elders would get together and settle the issue, but we don't have that process, so it falls upon the planning commission to come up with a reasonable course and I think it, with the recommendations of the A R C.
Who are you calling old?
Well, I actually, I was referring to older elders in other villages, not in serious villages. But when it comes down to it, I think that the A R C and the previous suggestions made by this commission have been followed. I, I, I can't find anything that disagree with the course. So I would take a motion that I hope that includes that the A R C did not err. No, no motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to hereby deny the appeal of 415 Spencer Street, application AP 200154, appealing the Architectural Review Committee approval of Architectural Review Permit, ARP
Thank you, Sandy. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Mike Dawson.
We have Freeman and Dawson as first and second. Any comments before we take a vote? Okay, a public comment? We've already had, so I'll take the vote.
I do not see any current public callers.
It's over.
But I can, I can take your roll call vote if, if you're ready for it.
If, we're ready.
All right. And Chair Brassfield?
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for that motion.
Motion, ca, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Commissioner, Chair, I mean, you might mention that this is appealable.
Appealable. You have 10 days to appeal to the city council. I think that, is it three days now with the COVID-19?
It's still 10 days. The only appeal period that is three days is for wireless facilities. So with this, it is a 10-day appeal period and that, that, um, appeal application can be found on our, our planning website. That's monterey.org/planning.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're very welcome.
Next item on the agenda. We have, I believe, an item, one more item.
Hmm. All the listeners?
Thank you, Chair. We're switching back now. I apologize. The next item, Chair Brassfield called and requested an item be added regarding stipends. So I will turn it over to Chair Bryce Brassfield for his comments.
In the midst of all this budget item.
$25? Come on.
Yeah, we all do, but Mike, we don't get that many dollars. In the spirit of what the city is asking for its employees, et cetera, I was going to ask if what the commission's thoughts were on just waiving our stipends or the duration of the current budget crisis. I'm sorry?
I already have.
You already have what?
Yeah, waived my, my fee. I talked to Hans and he.
But I, but the point, the point I make, the point I'm making is that from the commission, not just an individual. Thank you very much, Steve. But when you look at, we have one commission, that's a new commission, that's the N C I P has never had a stipend. And they've actually fought the city to keep from getting one. So I just suggest that it's something that we can do to support the city. I would relish your comments.
Agree.
Should be relative to the individual.
Yeah, this is Hudson. I, I personally think it's an, it's up to the individual and if the individual wants to do it, then the individual can. They can reach out and, and do that non-publicly. That's, that's my, I won't, I mean, I wouldn't, that, that's all I would say about it, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, if there's no other comments, then I'll just leave it the way it is and we can contact the city and make up our own minds. But thank you for the consideration.
Good idea, Mike.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Any other comments?
Oh, I, I have one. If you look at your screen, there's two Terrys. There's two Terrys online. I, I thought you maybe, maybe during the road, roll call that one of them would drop out, but nope, they were both still there.
Do they both look like me?
It's stereo, yeah.
Oh, okay. Just in case my doppelganger was here.
Thank you. Kim, we have any reports?
I have nothing to add to my written informational report.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments by the commission on any topic?
So under Commissioner's comments, I just have a couple things. So this is Hudson Reed. One is that I, it's, it's great to see how we're adapting. Businesses are adapting, things are changing, and they're doing it relatively quickly. You know, it's nice to see restaurants, I mean, it's really about the restaurants, my comment, is, it's great to see them out doing something different. They can't be inside, but they can be outside. So I think it's great that the city is allowing restaurants to operate on sidewalks. I, I personally think that Alvarado Street and even parts of Cali Principal should close and maybe even permanent, temporarily permanently, meaning, you know, during this period of time so that they can be open all day and, and there can be more spacing in restaurants. And I, I, I think it's great. I think we should be the, you know, Carmel had some, some issues with umbrellas and things like that, but I think Monterey should be able to be the one to do it right. And I think that Alvarado, if we had it open and people could go out, there would be a phenomenal venue. So that was one. I just think that it's, it's very encouraging to see how we're adapting and how cities are allowing changes to occur relatively quickly, which is great. Two, then my second comment is on the parking garages downtown Monterey. You know, they, they have been open to the public, but we have a lot of parking passes and they are, people need to be looking at, city needs to look at parking. We've been charged for parking passes even though the garages have been open for the whole time, which I'm presuming a lot of parking, people who had parking passes to begin with have been charged for that whole period of time or given very small discounts, but not really. And then finally, sorry, I have a lot of, a lot to say. Finally, I, my neighborhood, Fisherman's Flats, we have a very nice little neighborhood school, even though there's, the, the neighborhood is more older now, so there's not as many kids who go to school there. But it's a great neighborhood school. And the M P U S D has, for whatever reason, decided to much more fortify it. Normally, we could, on the weekends, we could just walk through, there's a little gap in the gate that was allowed people to walk through. They've blocked that. They are not allowing anybody on the, the school site really now, which is not a good thing. It's my belief that some of the playground equipment on Foothill School was approved and paid for by N I P with a stipulation that that be open to the neighborhood and to the public. So I just wanted to bring that up to everybody that, and, and maybe have the city think, look at at least the Foothill side of things. So that was it. Those are my, my comments, but it's, it's nice to be living in the city of Monterey.
Thanks, Hudson. Anybody else, any comments?
Yes. An elder, as an elder, I would like to say I'm, I'm glad I'm here. And I would like to find out if anybody knows what happened to the suggestion in light of what Hudson said about closing off Alvarado Street for restaurants, outdoor dining, at least part-time. Has anybody heard anything about that?
Yes, I have. I, I've heard one thing from Rick Johnson, the executive director of the Old Monterey Business Association. As a temporary thing, great. As a permanent thing, no. The business owners feel that if you close the street to automobiles, it will kill their businesses, but this is in the long term, the long range. In the short term, as Kim has pointed out, the encroachments have been moved out to street side and it looks like a street party for those restaurants that have seating outside. So all good news.
Thank you, Sandy.
Anybody else?
I, I believe the city manager did an emergency order that allowed staff to work with restaurants to create this outdoor seating. So it's actually been quite a substantial project. So it's actually been quite a substantial project that the city staff has taken on. Maybe you can do a quick description of that, Kim.
Sure, I'd be happy to. The city manager under emergency orders can allow exceptions to our municipal code. And he allowed businesses, he waived architectural review and allowed businesses to put chairs and tables on the sidewalk and waived fees for the building permit or encroachment permit is what it's called. And so right now, businesses submit an application directly to our building department. And then if it meets ADA and basic codes, it's approved. This is a six-month approval and it's a temporary encroachment permit. And if they want it to become permanent, then they have to come back and go through the architectural review process. But the, it's meant to immediately deal with the restaurant closures. In regards to the street closure of Alvarado, when you're out there, you may want to look. As they did the repavement, we put some plates in the street at each intersection. And there's bollards now that are on the side of the sidewalk. So for Farmer's Market or if the business community wants to shut down Alvarado, we have the way to do that safely with these bollards. They can easily be picked up and installed. To date, the Old Monterey Business Association and Canary Row Business Association, they have not voted to close the street. As Commissioner Freeman suggested, it was relayed that they were concerned that it would hurt business. But I would say things are changing rapidly. We've approved, I think we're close to 25 encroachment permits in about three or four days. So I'll just say things are, you know, literally daily, we're just sort of seeing what the new reality is.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I, I have one other comment, Mr. Chair. Just my experience of this meeting this afternoon is, it's a good meeting, but I think the audio has been a bit of a train wreck. At least for me, I don't know if I'm double speaking right now. A lot of the audios were, were difficult to understand and is, maybe we have a tech person who can look at that and, and see if there's some way of tightening it up a bit. Thanks.
Well, Tara, you have feedback on your speaker.
Okay, well, maybe it's, maybe the.
You're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
Well, it's not just me and my, what I'm hearing is a lot of feedback with other speakers as well.
I, I agree. I, but yeah, I just wanted to point out. I have one comment. Kim, I, we do, we're not doing field trips and I think we need to look closely at that. If we have to all drive to the site, stand six feet apart or more, I think we need to consider that. Because it's, these, these are getting pretty complex and we don't get the public participation that we had today. But I think a lot of it is, we, we just need to stay up on it. But thank you all for everything today. It was, it was a pretty good meeting. But thank you. With that, I will close it at 6:45 PM. If there's no other comment, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Everyone have a good week.